Join us at that later. So that we can establish quorum. Um, but as as per the guidance of LSC, if we're not able to establish quorum, then we will not be able to um vote on the matters at hand. Um, as relates to the agenda, we can just have discussion. So with that said, it's about it's three oh six. We will go ahead and call the meeting. Um, and I will begin taking roll call and I'm gonna call folks as I see them on my screen. So if I call your name, if you could just indicate your name and your role on the LSC, that would be great. Thank you. So I see Cindy.
Cindy Watola, parent rep.
Thank you, Cindy. Nick?
Nicole, teacher rep.
Awesome. Kirsten?
Kirsten Clay, parent rep.
Thank you, Kirsten. Uh, my name's Sarah Gatto and I am a parent rep. And let's see, I don't know if I see anyone else here on the LSC. I'll call their names just because I think I'm seeing some numbers pop in and um that might be some of our LSC members. Um, Kate?
I'm here.
Okay, welcome Kate. Could you just quickly say your name and your role?
Um, Kate Kaczynski, parent rep.
And thank you Kate. Kate is joining us from out of country. So thank you Kate for making that time zone shift to join us this afternoon. Um, and maybe I'll just call um Emily? And then I will call Lori. Okay, Emily said she's going to be joining us a little late and she's rushing home. And let's see. Um. Hey. And Lori indicated that her phone is uh not is about to die, so we'll see if she'll join us. Um, and then um I haven't heard anything from Mac. Uh, if they will be in attendance and I haven't heard anything from Sharice. And I do know that Principal Gibson did indicate that she would not be in attendance for today's conversation, today's special meeting. Um, but she did share her response to the questions that were presented to her. Um, and so I think we can share that response. Um. And uh move forward in that way. Um, so at this point, we have not established quorum. Um, and so with that said, that means we will not be able to vote, uh but we can certainly hold discussion. Um, and so I will um go ahead and um just share our our meet norms for this uh special meeting. Um, given the nature of the conversation today and the issues at hand as it relates that we'll be discussing as it relates to student safety, we do wanna um keep top of mind um the ways in which we share and listen to what has been shared and honoring the voices that are here in uh in in this meeting today. Um, and so I'm going to share um some some norms um that we can hold uh close to our our thinking and our our as as we open up the floor for discussion. Um, and these um norms are used during our Equity Committee meeting. Um, just to kind of acknowledge also um kind of the uh ways in which we share how important it is so that we can come into this space um in a safe way, but then also very much in a courageous way as well. So our meeting norms um for this special meeting um that I'd like for us to hold, it would be to check on his sensitivity and be open to listen, okay? Um, another norm is to use I statements, um speaking from their own experiences. Um, and um be mindful of those assumptions um that we may put on the table that may not be um fair. Um, and then um set an intention at the beginning um of this of every meeting that we have, but set an intention um for for how you want to lean in and participate in today's meeting. So what is that intention? So an example of that intention for me is making sure that everyone feels heard, okay? And and in the way in which they wanna feel heard in in respectful ways, okay? So what is your intention? Um, take a breath and realize that you can't fix everything in this meeting in this moment. Um, and so and 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 that's okay, right? We acknowledge that. Um, take time to sit back and recognize the pace um that is needed for the work and recognize the continuum of readiness where we act along our abilities to be able to um lean in and and move forward with um the issue at hand. So um those norms I share with you all as we step into the space to share um and uh for discussion. Um, and as I have shared the norms, I'm just gonna quickly look at the um roll call again to see if the members have joined. Um, I think one has. Um, Emily?
Yeah, sorry. Hi, I'm here.
Welcome Emily. Thank you for joining. Uh Emily, could you just state your name and your role, please?
Emily Holbert, teacher rep.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're still at one, two, three, four. I have six, which once again, that's not quorum, so we still are not able to um uh votes. Uh, but like again, we'll move into discussion only. Um, so with that said, um the point of discussion that we have here is a follow-up conversation um that we had last week about um students' safety. Um, and more pointedly was a students' safety um uh issue that was raised um by Principal Gibson in the fall of last year um that has come to light, that came to light in a public way from our last LSC meeting um that was held uh top of this month of June, the first um Wednesday in June. And and basically that issue was recognizing that our principal had um stated that she had um a a serious or a uh a text threat um against her person uh to to specifically detail what it is. Um, um snippets of of what that was have been shared. Um, but you know, the concern that has been raised is more specifically around the issues of um notification, what kind of safety plans have been putting were put into play at that time um or currently in play at that time as it relates to that threat that she received. Um, and also being mindful of not only her safety, but also this uh the safety of students. Um, and because it wa- was stated that that threat um was related to her role as uh principal and a principal of color here at our school, here at Tillman Elementary. So um um you know, we wanted to just kind of um explore, you know, once again, what were those um uh uh points of um protocol that were followed, those procedures that were in place to ensure that folks were notified, to ensure that there was some type of safety plan in play um when that threat was received. Um, and is that uh are those components um still in play? Was it investigated? Um, and um do does the overall um how has this impacted, I guess, or has does this does this threat inevitably um impact the overall safety of our student body? I will say as a parent, um when I first learned of it, I was and have and continue to be concerned. Um, absolutely for Principal Gibson's safety and also um being mindful of my my own child's safety as it relates to um you know, what that kind of looked like, God forbid, if if something did happen and how that would how that could manifest itself um at our school. So um that's the that's the heart of the matter that we've we've been really trying to unpack and discuss. Um, and uh and just try to see what has been put in play or or how this matter has been investigated just to kind of have uh some semblance of um uh security and and protection and um uh for our school. So um looking at our agenda, um we do uh have at the top of our agenda uh public participation. And so I do want to ask if Nick uh could see if we have any folks who've signed up for that and to open the floor for that, um and then we move from there. Once again, um in in the discussion, even though we don't have quorum at this time.
Um, yes, Sarah. So at this time, no one has signed up for public participation. I do see we uh did get a message from uh Patty Lenkov, who is here on the call in the chat, so everyone can can read that. Um, actually, I'll read it out loud so that uh those who are on the phone uh over the phone, so Kate can hear it. Um, so Patty is saying um she would like to acknowledge it is very disappointing that Principal Gibson is not in attendance for the second time in a row. Um, she recognizes summer vacation has begun for most staff and families, but she sees a few staff members on this call along with parents. She greatly appreciates them. Principal has vacation time that began today. It is extremely frustrating for us as parents do not have her respond to the questions relating to the safety of our school community. But other than that, there are no uh public participants.
Okay, thanks for reading that, um Nick. And um Principal Gibson did share a statement once again, as I shared before, in response to the series of questions that we had shared. Um, and the statement is pretty general enough. Um. Um, that unfortunately did not um answer our 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 questions, but I will read the statement out loud so folks can 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 um have a sense of um where Principal Gibson, well, so the folks can know what Principal Gibson shared um as it related to um um our concern around this particular issue. Um, and her statement is as such, let me just quickly um pull it up because my computer is acting a little slow. That's what the case. Okay, so um here we go. Uh, she says, um, "Thank you all for your hard work and dedication this year. Unfortunately, I will be unable to make the special meeting." Oh, one moment. Sorry, everyone. Sorry about that. Uh, so I'll start over. "Thank you all for your hard work and dedication this year. Unfortunately, I will be unable to make this special meeting. I would like to share my response to the previously submitted question below. Um, I hope each of you have a safe and enjoyable summer." Uh, and here's the statement. "I appreciate your concern and I want to to assure you that the safety of our students is at the forefront of all decisions that we make at school. Because this is an open investigation, I am not at liberty to discuss specific details. However, I can share that student safety is not at risk and the Chicago Police Department and the CPS Office of Safety and Security are aware and investigating the situation. All students are safe and student safety will continue to be our top priority. Based on the information we have, there was no safety risk to our students. Even though we are not in session and children are not currently in the building, this matter is continuing to be reviewed with high priority. Respectfully, Principal Gibson." Um, so that's the statement that she shared. And I'll open up the floor to any comments or questions that folks have. Um, I think for me, there may be some answers in that statement, but I will open up the floor for discussion. I will also acknowledge that we do have two representatives from the district. Welcome. Um, Deputy Chief uh Chief Superintendent Jerry Travolos, welcome. And we also have from the district um our 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 Director of LSC Relations, uh Kishasha Fort, uh welcome. Any other district representatives that we do not see but should acknowledge?
Yes, uh hi, um Ms. Tegold, this is Catalina. Yes. Hi, how are you?
Welcome Catalina. Catalina is our Network Four representative from the Office of LSC Relations. Welcome Catalina. Catalina Estre.
Good afternoon. Uh, I am Dr. Asaf and I am the Chief of Schools for Network Seven.
Uh, correction, Network Four. It's it's a recent transition.
Forgive me, I just transferred. I'm still on Network Seven mode and my apologies, it's Networks Four. Thank you, Deputy.
Okay, great. Welcome. Thank you. Um, all right, so once again, the floor's open and I also will say that um um there were some um there were some follow-up pieces that we that we had uh some conversations with district representatives. Um, um, so um I just wanna acknowledge that as well too, and we're grateful that you're here, so thank you. Kate, did you wanna share?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to voice my disappointment. Um, we had given Doc um Principal Gibson five days' notice. We had given her multiple times to see when she would be available, including during school time to in turn during the workday today. Um, but we never got any response. Um, and I just think it's disappointing that we have the Deputy Chief of of District Four and the Deputy and the Chief of District Four along with the head of LSE Relations. And we've had many people from the district at two meetings now, but our principal has not decided to show up when she is the person who really needs to answer these questions and is also the person who's ultimately responsible for the safety inside of our school building. And so many parents have voiced so many concerns and so many parents are actually leaving the school due to the concerns that they've had that they don't think have been addressed. So I just wanna point out who is present at this meeting and who is not present at this meeting. And it's unclear to me why this is still a workday and this is the last day of the school year. And we didn't get any um response back from the principal until after the meeting had been set because we had to set it with the the members that were available. Um, yeah, so just have to say that and I want everyone to acknowledge who is on the call and who is not.
Thank you, Kate. I will share that. Uh, okay, Nick, go ahead.
Um, I think I'm gonna echo the the sentiments of um already our public participant um today. Patty and just what Kate said. Um, you know, from my perception, the way I'm seeing it, um is that clearly the Principal Gibson's priorities and the LSC's priorities seem to be at odds, uh specifically this last month. Um, I think, um, I do thank everyone from the district for not having just been to two meetings. I believe I've seen uh Dr. Travolos and um Ms. Asaf at least at the last four meetings, regular and special meetings. And we really appreciate um you being on the in these meetings with us, helping support us um and our school community as a whole. Um, I i- it is disappointing. I'm not sure what the path forward is um at this point, if if our priorities are so different. I know um there is talk of at um the last couple of meetings, regular and special, that Principal Gibson attended. Um, there was mention of reconciliation, of working together, um of figuring, you know, the certain issues out. And uh I'm not seeing the evidence of that in these last few meetings.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Emily? And Emily, if you are talking, you're on mute.
Oh, hi, sorry. Did you say my name?
Yeah, I see your hand raised.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And also, I apologize about being a little late and I have a toddler, obviously totally candid. I have a toddler having a tantrum, so if you hear her in the background. Um, in any case, so um I just wanted to echo what all the others said is that um I'm just really disappointed. And I understand that she uh she wrote that note about how she wasn't gonna be able to make it and she responded in regards to the student safety issue. Uh, and I understand that that's what she thought this meeting was for and she's replying to that one issue, but I think she's very well aware that there's you know, lots of other things happening and and different feelings between all the last LSC meetings and you know, staff has expressed their concerns and put forth resolutions and parents have put forth concerns and resolutions and it feels like everybody in the community is being transparent and and putting forth forth all the effort. And it just is really disappointing in the end that we're not getting that in return from our leader um in terms of showing up to these meetings, in terms of no real end-of-year staff email or communication uh or to families. Um, I went in the building the past couple of days. I never saw her. Um, so you know, it's just real disappointing if we think back to this time last summer when I gave up a lot of my time of my family and my two young children to hire her. I was so excited um and eager and she said she was gonna be this awesome leader who was door open, always around, engaged with the community. And it just felt like that is not the case. And I just wonder where we go from here because I think we could say all these things or she could say all these things, we could put forth a mediation plan and I I get concerned that it's not going to happen or like what are the next steps here? I just feel like um a little hopeless and that's disappointing, so that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Um, I will say that for me, I see two things in this response. One is there is acknowledgement here around um the fact that this is an open investigation. So um that that to me says that, cause I think that speaks to one of our questions is was this reported? And um uh the fact that she does say it is an open investigation indicates that there was some report made that um has engaged the um Chicago Police Department and the CPS Office of Safe Security. So um I guess my question then, just to affirm um that if that is something that our district support folks here can affirm the fact that um that this is an open investigation. And maybe I'll direct that to that question, maybe to Dr. I mean to, can I say Dr. Travolos or do I say Jerry Travolos? It's Superintendent Travolos or even I guess to our district leaders, um Dr. Asaf or Jerry?
So I just wanna ask a quick question. Um, are we going into executive session or not? I'm I'm just a little confused here. I hear this conversation, but it's my understanding that the purpose of student safety, that discussion was gonna happen in the executive session.
So I do see um on the agenda um that that this an open discussion of student safety concerns. Um. You know, eh we can, you know, eh uh.
So you just wanna talk about it generally?
We can we can certainly do that. I mean, if there are things, um you know, unfortunately, we cannot vote into a closed session. Um, but um you know, I think this is a very, you know, open, transparent type of question.
Okay.
Yeah, can I can I just say that I think one of the reasons that we wanted to have a closed session was if there was anything that was privileged information, things that could not be discussed out in the open um that we would be able to talk about those things in in closed session confidentially. I have to say that there is a lot of this discussion that should be had in front of parents and that I don't actually think is privileged at all. Um, I I will say this, I know I said this in the closed session the other day. It is a general statement that I can say in front of everyone on this call. Every my what my other daughter goes to Lane, every single time there is a threat of any sort that happens at Lane, whether sometimes it's just that a school that has similar colors or a similar logo in a different state has a threat made against it. And eh within twelve hours, there is an email that goes out that says there was a threat against someone in our community or the school community. This is who it's been reported to. This is what we are doing to increase safety at the school until we investigate. And this is when you can expect more information about this threat. We are doing everything possible to make sure your students are safe at school. Then, once they assess the threat and figure out whether or not it is a real threat or deemed not um like unsubstantiated or um not a a true threat, then another email goes out explaining all of that again. So they don't say who this who made the threat. They don't say what happened in the investigation. They don't talk about disciplinary action if it's a student. They don't talk about the police information. But they give that basic information to parents, usually within twelve hours of a threat. And so I will state again that if the threat was what Principal Gibson said it was, which was a threat on her life for being the principal of our school, it is unfathomable to me that that was a threat that wouldn't have risen to the level of needing an explanation going out to parents, talking about what that there was a threat that these are the steps we're we're that we're going to do to increase security while we assess the threat and that that threat um and what who the report was made to. That is basic information that comes out with every threat at every school that I've seen. And so this level of threat that Principal Gibson has told people about, this is not hearsay. This is people, Principal Gibson has told members of the LSC about this threat. And if it was what she said it was, I cannot understand how there was zero communication in a timely manner to parents. And so I know that maybe there can't be an answer um from Dr. Travolos or the other representatives on right now. But that is the thing that is so concerning to me is why this was handled so much differently than every than the toy gun incident. A child took a picture of a toy gun on a group chat and I got an email within twelve hours. How in the world was there zero information? And then this is brought up in the last five minutes of the last LSC meeting of the year with zero information going to parents. So I will say that again, and I do think that some of this discussion should be in the open forum. Of course, specifics of what happened um or what the evaluation was or exact dates or times that could be privileged, that should be put into closed session, but in open session, we should be asking some questions as to why parents were not notified of this threat.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I and I was at the last meeting on Sunday, so I do understand. Um, and I do uh recognize that does goo community want some information about just the health and safety of this community? So I I get that. We just wanted to make clear where the discussion was gonna go, the specifics. And you just again reiterated that it will be left at a kind of a general high level, okay? Um, there were some action items that came out of the meeting uh for uh for us, um Dr. Travolos and my office. And we were able to um to actually get get some information that we can share, okay? Um, do you, I could start it off or Dr. Travolos? I'll I'll start with the the question of the question that the parents are most concerned about is is there um concerns or a threat to the school community? So we met with JD today and we were able to confirm um that there is no active ongoing threat to the school community. Um. There will be a communication that's gonna be drafted that will be shared with the school community. So everyone has the same information. Um, so that is in development. Um, the uh this the second piece related to um you know, the the details that can be shared and will, you know, that will be outlined in that communication. Um, another action item that came out of the meeting uh was that, you know, we there would be some support provided in the in the area of um DEI. Uh, and the network has graciously uh found a partner that can work with the school community and the principal in that endeavor. Um, and I think that's pretty much it. And Doc Travolos, if I'm missing something, please let me.
I mean, in a in a very high level again, because we are an open session. Um, so I wanna let you know that after our meeting last week, we got together and and we with with uh the Office of LSC Relations, you know, with our our network folks, with safety and security to really understand this. So we can come back and share. So we can come back and share and be very clear. And, and I want to reaffirm what you just heard. There is no threat to the school community. Uh, Principal Gibson even shared that information and, and the email uh, just the other day. Likewise, some of the questions around um, uh, climate, culture, um, diversity, equity, inclusion. Dr. Saaf, our chief uh, network officer was able to identify a external coach who will be paid for by the network office to work with Principal Gibson on many of the matters that were brought up. So that plan has uh, initiated. My understanding, the initial, initial conference and meeting has taken place, but some work that we're supporting with. I think what's really important to note uh, in addition is again, yeah, uh, there wasn't, you know, there, there was a text message, right? Um, but that text message um, was not directed to the school community. And everyone is safe. There is no immediate threat. Um, and we will be communicating something in writing um, from Safety and Concern, uh, and Security just to again, um, get that message out to everyone.
Okay, that's helpful and insightful. Um, do you have a, a, a specific timeframe when that communication will be uh, going out?
Yeah. So if, if I may say, it is a, a, a busy time and not to downplay the importance of this, but as you can imagine, safety and security is a concern in 650 schools across the district and we have some communities who are, who are affected by this um, and, and very severe manners. So our, our, our Director of Safety and Security has been gracious to give us time, but also asked that we give her time so she can kind of put this letter together and so forth. And has offered her services as well as, as we kind of continue if we need to clarify things. Uh, but please understand that's something uh, that her office will work on. We'll share with the network and we'll make sure to get that to you as well.
Thank you. And you mentioned, uh, oh, uh, welcome. Go ahead. I think Lori has joined. Welcome, Lori. Thank you. Um, Lori, just for the sake of the record, say your name and your role. Um, and she's multitasking out that way. So um, does uh, uh, does anybody know how to tell Lori how to unmute herself if she's on the phone?
It's Star Six. It's Star Six.
Thanks, Kate. Go ahead, uh, alright.
Oh, look, I unmuted myself. I'm driving on 90 with the kids in rush hour and uh, my phone's about to die, but I'm here. I'm Lori Vies. I'm a parent rep.
Thanks, Lori. Welcome. Uh, okay, uh, Nick, then I, oh, I'm sorry, Cindy and then I see Nick. Cindy, go ahead.
So I'm, Carol, I think, I'm just wondering if I think that there's a, just a lot of, I know they didn't sign up for public participation, but I feel like there are a lot of questions right now within the meeting. Are we in a space that we can open the floor and answer some of those questions?
Or, or do we have quorum and we can go into closed session to get some of the more specific questions that we had asked?
Um, we do, we have established quorum, uh, so we could do that. Um, Cindy, I mean, if you want to uh, you know, highlight maybe some of the comments, um,
So, so the only thing that I would say is if, if Lori's phone is about to die, it would really be good to have quorum vote to get into closed session. And then um, we can maybe come back to some of those comments because I feel like although I, it's really important that we get parent comments, I think that since we have all of these people from the district today, we probably need to get that done because that will be the hardest thing to, we can, even if we lose someone and we don't have quorum, we can have the public um, discussion. Um, sorry, that was just my vote.
Just so you know, I should be home if this traffic picks up. I'll be home in 15, so I'll stay on and just in case I die, I will be back on. And just so everybody knows, I said I could make this time, so I feel like a slacker, but I'm trying. Alright, so I will be home soon, but I will listen as long as I can and I can vote now.
Thanks, Lori. Um, so while we go ahead and move into a closed session, um, and when we come back out, um, just really also be mindful of um, what, you know, what we can share and how we can share it with our, with our um, folks here that have joined us. We're deeply appreciative that we have staff and, and families here. Um, and so we come back out really being mindful of um, you know, how much we can share and, and, and making sure that that shares as robust as possible. Um, especially for the folks that have joined us, uh, and also be mindful of the time we take uh, in closed session. Um, Nick, quickly, is there something that you wanted to say before we vote to move into closed session?
Oh, no, what I was going to say can wait, but I was just wondering, and maybe Ms. Ford can answer this. Can we vote to go into closed session or do we now have to first load on the agenda now that we're all here?
Uh, technically agenda first, then, yeah, so it's, it's a meeting, so you still follow the protocols.
Okay.
Alright. So do we have a motion on the floor to vote on the approval of the agenda?
Uh, I motion to approve the, today's agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I second.
Thank you, Emily. Um, and I'll open it up for discussion. Alright, uh, all in favor, uh, so I'll call roll call for
I bow.
Acknowledging or uh, acknowledging yea, nay, or abstain for the vote to um, approve the agenda. I'll call names in the order which I see them. Um, Emily. Oh, Emily. Um, I know she's multitasking as well. Um, so we will come back to her on the roll call. Um, Lori?
Lori Vies. Yay.
Um, Nick?
Nick Hall, yes.
Uh, Cindy?
Cindy Watola, aye.
Kate?
Kate Kaczynski, yes.
Kirsten?
Kirsten Clay, yes.
Uh, Sarah Ogato, that is a yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. And then we'll come back to Emily.
Emily Holbert, yes.
Thank you. That is uh, unanimous, uh, especially considering all that are here. Um, so our next vote is to vote into um, bringing in, um, we'd like to invite our district um, representatives into closed session, which would include um, uh, Dr. Travlos, Dr. Saaf, uh, Kashasha Ford and Carolina Este into our closed session. Um, that's the motion, uh, I mean, that's the motion I put forward, uh, we're gonna have to second that motion.
I second. Nick, second.
Thank you. Um, open up for discussion. Alright, um, votes, um, the inclusion of our district um, folks into our closed session, uh, which includes Dr. Saaf. Um, so we'll call, uh, Emily? And we'll come back to you, Emily. If you can acknowledge with a yea, nay, or abstain.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
To invite our district support to keep the closed session. Okay. You, Emily. Um, Lori?
Yes, uh, Lori Vies, aye.
Aye, thank you, Lori. Um, Nick?
Yes.
Great. Cindy?
Aye.
Kate?
Kate Kaczynski, yes.
Sarah Ogato, yes, and Kirsten?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then finally, um, to vote to go into closed session to have um, uh, a, a, a focused conversation around student safety concerns. Um, I'll put that motion out there. Uh, do I have a second?
I second the motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, any, I'll open up the floor for discussion. Okay, another roll call for the vote, yea, nay, or abstain. Um, Emily? Yea, nay, or abstain for closed session?
Emily Holbert, yes.
Um, Lori?
Yeah, uh, Lori Vies, aye.
Thank you. Uh, Nick?
Yes.
Thank you. Cindy?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Kate?
Kate Kaczynski, yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Sarah Ogato, yes. That vote is unanimous. Alright, with that said, Nick, could you be so gracious enough to um, send us a link to the closed session? And as Nick is doing that, just want to let folks know that what will happen now is that this meeting will be closed out. Um, and then
Can I ask that someone send the phone number to join the other one with the um, with the PIN because I wasn't able to join the Google Meet, then I probably won't be able to join that one either.
Absolutely, yes.
And this is Lori. I need it texted to me too because I'm still driving.
Gotcha. Will do. Okay, so um, just as I mentioned before, um, uh, what happened is for the rest of the folks, um, we'll move into closed session. This meeting will be um, closed uh, down. Um, but we'll do our best to uh, notify folks that we'll come back in into open session. Um, or you can just hang on and this link and it'll open back up. Um, so just want to share those instructions for folks. And Nick has posted the phone number uh, in the chat and I will um, um, say that out loud, um, for folks who are joining by the phone and also uh, send that out to the L S C email. Um, um, and to text individually to members who need it. Um, so that phone number is 1314 And the PIN is 369. I'm sorry, the PIN is 919369142. Um, so that has been shared in our L S C email. And um, we will go ahead and move into closed session. Okay, so we are back into open session. Welcome uh, back uh, everyone. Um, so with that said, I am going to just briefly, quickly share what can be shared. And actually, Lori, Kashasha, can I um, ask you to do that, given your time with us? Um, and, and then we can move forward in that way in terms of talking about action, the action and steps.
You're putting me on the spot. I'll let you share it and then if you make a mistake, I'll fix it. I'm a teacher, I don't want to do your work for you. I'll let you, I'll guide you if you're going astray. Still, you're always a teacher.
Oh, uh, perfect. So with that said, um, we, we had a discussion around the student safety concerns specifically as it related to um, uh, what has, what has been shared as a, as a threat. So um, what, what I can share is that um, has been affirmed with the, the district personnel is that uh, undeniably, it's not a threat to the school community. Um, and that um, what we do know is that the communication that was shared was racially charged. Um, and so with that said, um, we don't want to minimize how Gibson felt or interpreted the situation because that word threat was, was communicated. Um, but it is affirmed um, by uh, the district that it is what that, the nature of that communication was deemed not a threat to the school community. Okay? So um, with that said, you know, you know, how, how do we move forward as an L S C? How to move forward as a school community? How do we move forward knowing that our school leader received a communication that was racially charged? Um, and, and not be able to kind of parse out recognizing that yes, this was an individual threat made to her, but she's our school leader, right? Um, and so we hold her in a space of compassion. Um, and also in a space of that she's able to acknowledge and perceive, you know, what she experienced and the way that she can do that. Uh, but we also um, know that we can feel a certain way too in terms of having some concerns, not only for her, but for our students and the, and ourselves as as parents, um, and for our teachers and our staff members here at the school community. So with that said, um, we did talk about and recognize the fact that the district has put on the table um, some supports um, for, for Principal Gibson as it relates to yes, as it relates to being able to have a support she needs to move forward in her role as, as our school leader. Specifically, those supports are um, around the issues around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, also thinking about the ways in which um, the concerns are, and, and which that um, information is being communicated so that um, it, it, it's, it is mindful of the various roles that we play and that we care and that we hope. Um, it also has been shared that um, the district will be um, working with the um, Kashasha might mess up here, working with the uh, Office of uh, Security, the head of security to release a statement um, indicating what I've just shared, um, acknowledging that the communication um, was not a threat to the school community. Um, but then also acknowledging that there are some additional supports in play um, for Principal Gibson, um, and hopefully the school community, just in terms of um, how do we honor, recognize um, who she is as our leader, but then more so um, ensuring that the ways in which we've moved forward, um, is done ways in which we're able to um, communicate uh, issues of concern um, in, in transparent, open, honest, respectful um, mannerisms that work to build um, relational trust that we desperately need here and here at Tummin with our school leader. So uh, I'm, that's, that's where I leave with that. Um, I'll open the floor um, for our members who want, who want to um, make any additional comments or statements or even to our district folks who are still here with us. Um, and uh, you know, just in terms of thinking about how do we move forward, you know, how do we move forward? So I'll open the floor there. Cindy?
Do we want to clarify sort of how it's different when it's something, a per, a personal threat as opposed to a direct threat involving the kids at school and why the communication, if there was going to be communication, it wasn't going to come from CPS, it would come from CPD. So just so everybody knows that that's why you didn't receive a communication from CPS is because it was a case that was taken on by Chicago Police Department and because it's a personal threat. I say threat in quotation because it's, it's very confusing because we've heard the word threat, but according to CPD, it was not deemed a threat.
Thank you, Cindy. Any, oh, welcome, Lori. You made it. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Um, alright, so do want to um, move into action items. Where do we move forward from here? Um, I do want to um, probably, I do want to talk about uh, making sure that um, some resources have been um, articulated that would be shared from the district as it relates to a D E I coach um, for Principal Gibson. And then also thinking about um, another action step. So making, so the action step is making sure that uh, Principal Gibson does receive that support with a D E I coach and the nature and the extent of that type of support would be helpful. Um, and then also how that uh, support also um, holds or um, Um, and then also how that, uh, support also, um, holds or, um, how that support, um, extends to our teachers and our staff and to our family members. Um, um, because I think that type of support is needed as well. Um, and then another action item is just around communication. Um, and I know we've had some of these action items in the past, but I guess I'll reiterate them. Um, and that more so is, um, you know, how can we, uh, ensure that, um, there is open and honest communication, um, as it relates to, um, being able to have information as accurate as possible, um, you know, in the midst of the emotions that are there. And, and acknowledging our roles, um, and our abilities to be able to have a support system to process and not process. So, uh, Emily, I'll give the floor to you. I think you said you wanted to share something. All right, so, uh, there was two things I had talked about was DA coach and then, um, the action item around communication and then, um, Emily, is it okay for me to state it out loud? Um, but I will point everyone to, um, Emily's statements.
Sure, sorry. No, I just am multitasking, so I thought I'd write it. I just wanted to say again for the other parents on the call that like, I think there's a lot, I think we can all, um, admit. There's like, there's a, there's a couple of things on the agenda, but that there's a lot of other, um, sort of things, uh, floating, right? Like in the, in, in the air and the environment and the community here. So I, I guess where I was coming from a place of speaking a little bit of frustration and I apologize if I came off as unprofessional. That was not my intention. And I, uh, didn't want to also, um, you know, uh, I just, I wanted to come from a place of compassion and understanding as it relates to like a personal threat to Ms. Gibson. I, I, um, can't imagine, you know, receiving something like that, even if it wasn't as extreme as people originally thought. It still never feels good to be treated, you know, um, in a disrespectful manner. So I just wanted to acknowledge that piece, uh, and I'm speaking more to, you know, school climate and culture and morale and communication and all sorts of other things that I think are on the table that I look forward to us hopefully continuing to resolve. So I just kind of wanted to, um, address that. And also was speaking from a place of frustration because I have a toddler who is having like a major tantrum at, of course, a terrible time. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, everyone, for all your time on a Friday and hope everyone's able to relax some after this.
Thank you. Thank you so much, um, Emily, for sharing that. And, um, I know we're all multitasking right now. I'm sure you've seen this little person around me here. But, you know, like we, we lean in and we do what we need to do to be able to ensure that we have information we need to have to move forward and, and in a strong way and in a supportive way. And so, you know, I just, I'm appreciation of everyone who's here to be able to, um, really push and advocate for what, what we need. Um, and, and to get to, um, where we need to go. In the midst of all that we have and what we're encountering and all that we need, um, as a school community. So, um, we don't stop. We lean in, um, we, we juggle, um, and, and we, and we, I, I, we, we, I was gonna say, we don't settle. When we don't settle, we, we work together to get what we need to get done. And, and it, and it would be great if we could do it together. So, um, Cindy, are there any additional action items? That I, I know I shared those two. Are there any additional ones that you have in your notes?
No, I don't have any action items. I just feel like we, you know, we have parents on a Friday evening, you know, in on this meeting, and I think that we moved to adjourn and they're just left with so many questions. I just don't know where we offer this, the time and the space to get those questions answered and process some of the feelings that they're having. So what I, what do we do about that?
Parents, I would definitely invite parents and folks who are here, I'd definitely invite you to, um, put them in the chat. And, you know, let's, you know, I don't want to, uh, violate any pieces here as well as the opening of public participation back up again. But I do also want to acknowledge that we do have, uh, an exciting, um, uh, group of individuals who've stepped up to be on our LSC next year and will, you know, are, are committed to moving, you know, the work forward as a school. And so once again, I'll, I'll, um, I'll give us two minutes to, to put in the chat questions, those unanswered questions, those comments for folks that are here. And then we'll adjourn at about, uh, four forty-five, um, because they, we do see you. Um, we'd love to hear you, um, and, and thank you. Thank you.
So do we break some sort of like cardinal rule if we open up participation again, public participation?
I think we do, because it's not on the agenda. Um, we would be in violation of O M A.
Okay.
Yeah, I hate to say that, you know, because they were, the public was all provided with the, the link, you know, the forty-eight hours ahead of time. I think Sarah's option of, you know, we can, if people have questions, they can just put them in the chat. You know, obviously we'll get to see them and, um, I know that, I believe both are new parent members, um, are on the call as well who will be taking, oh, who will be joining the LSC in July. Um, so they'll get to see those questions too. Um, and I know both Illyon and Sarah have been to, I think, almost every meeting since April. So they are well aware of, of what we've been looking at as far as issues.
So we, I mean, so the, what we're getting in the chat right now, we answer those offline?
I guess my, we could do a FAQ statement. Um, I mean, we, we could definitely answer those offline. We could also, I guess how we would share that, we could include that as a part of the minutes, meeting minutes. You know, here were the questions that were asked, here are the responses. Those responses in the meeting minutes.
I'm just gonna screenshot them.
Yep.
All right.
And I'm.
Fire away, everybody.
Okay, I believe, I have the floor, Emily.
Well, I just see one addressed to me and I'm like, you know, when you say we'll respond, uh, we will do an FAQ, is it that we would respond to them or we would send them to Ms. Gibson or to the CPS? You know, network professionals that were on the call? Or I guess it depends on the question?
I think it definitely depends on the question. Um, definitely depends on the question. Okay.
It's okay, Laura. It, I, I mean, I'll be candid in saying that we didn't really get like a form, a formal plan or a formal timeline in my, in my opinion, and other members could correct me if I'm wrong. They're definitely supportive, but I, I didn't hear a lot of, I didn't hear a lot of specifics, if I'm being honest.
And so Dana, we see, I see your comment as well too. We can do some research on that, ways to improve public participation. Okay, and it's time. So it's four forty-six. Thank you, everyone. I also have, um, copied these questions. Cindy and we will include these questions in the minutes and the responses and ask, and we'll vet out those questions to either ourselves, to our district people or even to those individuals who could best answer them. So, um, just wanted to, um, say thank you. Lori?
Real quick, I know I haven't heard anything about scheduling the July meeting. Does someone on the LSC want to reach out to Gibson to find out when we're having our July meeting?
Uh, I can't, uh, I think that might would have to be a representative from the new, new board, um, to get that scheduled. Uh, I was gonna say I could do that, but I don't think I can do that. That would have to be one of the representatives from the, uh, actually, uh, it would be great because either it could be called by Principal Gibson or it could be, um, you know, four of the new representatives to put that meeting on the books. So, um, we'll just put that.
Just scared of Cindy, I'm like, do you want to do it? I'm fine to do it. I guess we, it would be nice to, uh, to get that on the books for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
People, we're deeply appreciation. Right, take care, enjoy your weekends, your, your families. All right, bye.